Morning, everyone. We'll call the meeting in order. First item is approve of the agenda.
Approve.
All those in favor.
Alright.
Those opposed? Minutes to the August eighth, twenty twenty three board meeting.
Approve.
Second. All those in favor.
Alright.
Those opposed? I T office bits.
Uh, we have a. Three bits for the construction. Uh, one bit for uh. Flexible. Uh, what we're trying to do here is kind of bring that T department together and uh. Find an area to uh consolidate some of the servers in. Um. One of the things we would be doing is we'd be looking for a ten gigabyte uh patch between uh here and the law center. Uh, to be able to do that. And then we'd be able to run backups without. Affecting anybody's uh office.
We have, we have room down there at the law center. I think we could um. Put a couple of walls in and some doors and moves and settings and that will provide some, some area there. I think. Um, I think a little bit on this was. I've got eleven thousand thirteen. What's that? Thirteen, thirteen? The other two were in the thirties. So maybe. I think that money, I'm up with that money. I mean, that's fine.
And is that thirteen plus the electric?
Yeah, the thirteen actually minus one of the doors. We had figured three doors. Uh, so I figured it'd cost be fifteen, three seventy, two eighty one using uh Kevin Devines and uh Scott Ridgeway's votes.
Well, they've been able to do those backups without affecting anything. Huge. Cause I know there's issues.
He said. That'd be big to be able to do backups without affecting you. And this would also facilitate the ability to uh move the uh H four hundred uh online. Uh, I don't know. Kelly's maybe excited about that, about getting the rack out of her office there. Uh, and then a couple more that you had in there, we can move downstairs. Uh. That would allow us to get like the assessed server and then uh one of the backup servers out of there and of course use one hundred. Uh, should be able to just remove that rack.
Any questions, comments? Their motion to approve it. The divine bid and the fridge way of it.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Those opposed? Thank you, guys. When you need the agreement reference fiscal year twenty twenty three JAG grant. Sir yearly.
Yeah, it's a yearly grant that the city gives only get fifteen percent of that money that they get. Um, I guess I proposed to them that we use it towards intersection.
Questions? I'll move to approve. Second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Those opposed? Approval for hiring city health department. Uh, this is something I think that was done a long time ago and then we had uh. People on our staff that did it. So we hadn't used them while we actually contracted with some of the other cities. Uh, in the county to do this. Uh, we're at a point right now where we need someone that's uh trained in uh looking for. Things in derelict properties and and the legal side of it. So Darren worked with Zach to put together a contract and it's a as needed contract. Uh, sixty dollars an hour, sixty five cent mileage. Uh, pretty standard based contract. I think it's pretty much right in line with what we had done uh again with other cities. In the county of the past. So this uh, this will help us. Work with some properties in the county to uh get cleaned up and make sure we're doing everything proper and right. And legally when we go into to tear something down or require something that the paperwork's done correctly. Zach, anything you want to add?
Uh, no, I don't think so. I think that uh the main thing is just where I want to keep up the communication where, you know, a lot of work on our side too. We're gonna try as hard as we can to get there. Uh, just back and forth a little bit and I think we'll be able to make more.
And I think for the most part, I think our guys can get it to that level to where, you know, to to go in and again, get that. From someone that's certified and understands what needs actually done. I think we can work well together with that. This isn't kind of any problem with your capacity to do your own work.
Uh, talked with with the guys about that a little bit. Um. It being as needed and just kind of having a dialogue back and forth. There's a, the time that it comes up that we're gonna really have issues with sanitation or something like that. We'll grab a company, but um also gonna just, you know, uh throw anybody that's qualified at it. This, I mean, I might even do some inspections. Really need to see them.
Sure. Thank you. And ultimately, so much of this stuff's not so time sensitive that it needs done today either. So. Any other questions?
Appreciate it.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve it.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Those opposed? Number six, appoint Darren Patterson to E nine one one board.
There's a. The nine one board uh has county representation on there, but I think uh with some of the things the nine one board's looking to. With the radio system and stuff, I think it'd be good to have one of you on that board. So that's what we're looking at. Or it's one of you to to be on that board.
Rob makes a motion to approve Darren. I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Those opposed? Approval of construction plans for Bridge eighty three on one hundred and sixtieth street over Palestine Creek.
This is just the set plans for to replace that bridge up north west of.
Questions? This on the ground, right?
Yes.
Is there a motion approved?
Motion to approve it.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Approval of construction plan for Bridge nineteen on Lake Road over Village Creek.
Uh, these plans are for Lake Road just south of town. Might be the first one inside the county there. Hopefully get that one note out here.
Will you be closing that road through?
It would be permanently closed for duration of the project.
For how long?
Uh. Three months possibly.
Yeah. I guess if you, have you considered? How to manage some of that traffic on gravel?
Well, down that way, there's not many options.
I know.
Unfortunately, um, I mean, we could go in and we could create a temporary structure, increase the overall project's cost, but.
We just take him out, take him out like Point Isabel, right? Then bring him back across.
Yeah.
Copperhead.
Yep. And then by dust control.
Yep.
It will be sending a lot more traffic that way. Um, anticipating that we will allow, not allow the contractor to have it closed anywhere between September fifteenth and after. It must be open through that winter, also through uh harvest. But we've been allowing to close during planting season and summer spray season just because we're gonna hit something. You know, it's easier to hit those two seasons than it is the harvest season and winter.
And it's easier in the summer at middle school classes.
Correct. But with this, they might end up going a little bit in towards the, towards the end of the school year. So we, we might catch the school.
I'm making motion to approve it. I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Resolution number forty two, twenty twenty three, in support of the joint M P D G grant agreement letter of support for twenty three, twenty four. Multi, multi module program discretionary grant project.
What a mouthful.
Yes.
Uh, just as our, at our last meeting, we did the uh joint agreement twenty eighty. This is the resolution.
This just completes that.
It's out of world paper process. I'm making motion to approve it.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Recorder's black guy's ten viewer annual maintenance. Annual maintenance contract like a hundred and some dollars, wasn't it? I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Alright.
Those opposed? Request for payroll approval, new hire. C O one, the sheriff's office.
Our replacement. Open position. He's just going full time, right? That's it. This was the part time going full time. I think that's, I think the next one is.
This is the one that we took off last week or at the last meeting that we have, but since he worked, we need to approve it.
It's just a. Approval that should have been left on last week that I, I did. Thank for taking responsibility for your actions. So thank.
Second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Request for payroll approval, change of employment, C O one sheriff's office. This is the part time, the full time.
Yeah, part time.
Making motion accept.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Request for payroll approval, new hire, C O one sheriff's office.
So the decision.
Who's to prove? Who is it?
I have.
Oh, that's. That was a center copy that I left in there because. Recent numbers and stuff on it.
Okay. So that's why I had two Marshall hooks.
Yeah. Because later than they brought that stuff after you talked to her, she submitted that form to me.
Okay.
Need a motion to approve. I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Request for payroll approval, change of employment, public health nurses. This takes the clerk uh up to where she should be in the twenty twenty seven an hour. Thanks, Don.
This is right here.
I'm making to approve.
Second.
Those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Request for payroll approval, change of employment, secondary roads. Is saying you're a blade two operator?
Uh, blade operator to a utility operator.
Make your motion accept.
My second. Those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Request for payroll approval, new hire, secondary roads.
Summer help to permanent staff. To blade, to a blade operator, so that he passed background.
Failed retirement though, didn't it?
Uh.
He failed retirement. It's a good hire.
It brings a lot of smile.
It, it.
Yeah.
It's smiling. He brings a really good positive attitude to the group.
Yeah.
Okay, motion.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? That's, that's Dave Yeager. It's that we're talking about former fireman. Uh, need a motion to accept and file the treasurer's investor report for July twenty twenty three.
I'll move to accept.
Second. All those in favor?
Alright.
I. Opposed? Anything else come before the board?
So where are we at with the blockage? Open that or is it?
No. I don't have an update. I haven't talked to um. Him, Pelogi uh in about three weeks. I talked to her. It's been longer than I talked. Yeah, three, I talked to her July twenty eight. And they were supposed to be starting on it then. I'm not sure. Uh, I'm not sure where they're setting that with it now. But hopefully, once, once they get up there, to my understanding, they have the materials and stuff to do it. So as soon as they're able to get that last ten foot laid on it, we're good to go. Um. I have talked to Pierce fence about some fencing on each end of it, just something that can permanently be there in case there's ever an issue. Blood events, something like that, that uh, that needs closed on. They've actually done some uh, are gonna do some, some work on it. Donating some of the work. For that. So uh, he's gonna give me an idea of cost and we can bring that back. Won't be anything. Um, crazy by any means on that, but I think it'd be nice to have something to wear. If we have to close it, we're not just ripping something up there with zip ties or anything else to, to get it, to get it back. So. So hopefully, uh, hopefully here in the next few weeks, that's openly and ready to go, but I will reach out to her. Go see where they're at.
The other thing I wanted to bring up, obviously, you know, you've heard that, you know, Indian Hills' point, forcing their child development center. Um. Where's Brian? And I think maybe we were at this before. Where, where is this, where is the county sitting right now in terms of childcare and the process? Try to bring more of that because it seems like there hasn't been a lot of discussion one way or the other about it. So if anybody can shed light, because I know there's a lot of, you know, families that'll be a little bit displaced with childcare here in the next couple of months. Especially for their young, really young ones. Um, but I just kind of wanted to get your perspective on, on where the county sits and, and what needs kind of big plays to make sure that there is. Um, you know, adequate resources for people and then, you know, eventually adequate childcare for people.
Sure. I'll comment a couple of things. Uh. First, I was really disappointed in Indian Hills' decision because that, the thing is, he's been there for a long time. And so I would, I would enjoy debating him on that decision, but that's probably too late to do that this time. The other thing is, is you're very well aware that Mark Rowe and his organization are working on the, the childcare facility. Potential in his thumb up. And at this point, I'm thinking we probably are waiting until they get a little further along in that process. But in, in the meantime, what? I would like to pursue is this kind of idea of encouraging at home daycare facilities. So we're, we're allowing more people that, that um. Could have some need to have income, but be home based income. So that's one thing that, that. I like to pursue with discussion with like the Department of New Services and some of the service providers in the area, see if that could be encouraged or enhanced. Over what it is today. That could be a quicker, short term solution. So several things going on, but. It's never fast enough, right?
Yeah. Leaving to do in home, you have to be licensed, right? I mean.
Yes. Right.
Yeah. I guess through the H S. Um. But it only depends on how many kids they have, seems.
Now, I know there was a meeting yesterday with Mark and the mayor and uh some other folks from the city. Um, on that and I reached out to some people to kind of see what their shortfall was. So I thought, you know what? Maybe that's something that. We can't necessarily put a lot into, but. Uh, we're desert in a lot of things, you know, and I think that's a, a word that may be getting a little widely used, but we're. A retail desert. We're definitely a childcare desert. And when you talk about economic development, that's a huge, that's a huge area. Uh, to fill to try to get people into the workforce. And you know, there's a lot of moving factors with it. I know uh. One person that two kids and was going to hills in their daycare, sixteen hundred dollars a month. Uh, one of them was, I believe, in like the three year old. Side and the other one was. A year old, year and a half old, something like that. So, you know, you start factoring in sixteen hundred dollars a month. Your pay better be. Worth it to be out in the workforce, you know? Um, so. It, it's definitely something. That I'm interested in working through. I think it gets really tough. As far as who do you fund? How do you fund it? Do you help with the build out of a facility, which was talked about for quite some time with the uh. What I always refer to as the A P A C building downtown. You know, they looked at that as being a childcare facility in there. Possibility of us helping with a build out of something like that. Um, probably lean a little more toward that than just saying. You're in twenty five thousand dollars a year, twenty thousand dollars a year, you know, to help do this. But I think what it really gets into is. You know, Indian Hills, the shortfall was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And uh, you know, for us, for the city, for Goat Pit, for whoever it is, to try to help make up even half of that. Is a pretty substantial number. And, and I think we're all on board with trying to do something. It's just, what is that? And then how do you get the pay? Of those providers up to a point to where it's financially viable for them. To have that business as well. As well as keeping childcare costs low to where the person. Can actually go work. So I agree a hundred percent with Brian. It's, you know, there's, there's a lot of. There's a lot of moving parts with it, you know, wish there, literally wish the magic bullet was just throwing some money at it and, and getting it done. But I. This is one of those areas I don't think. That is the case. And we definitely want to make sure that people are certified, that kids are going to homes where. You know, they're, they're getting the mills they should. They're being taken care of and, and some things like that. So, yeah, it, it definitely sucks. Um, for that with hills, I, I understand where they're at with it. I know this has been discussed well before this year. I would love to see them give a little more time. To that. I know, uh, talking to Pat McReynold yesterday, um. I think there is some things in the works, maybe with the R H C facility and some things like that. So. Like, like you said, never quick enough, but hopefully we can get someone to come in. I mean, that's a, that's a huge demographic and a huge need. A lot of parents that I'm friends with. That's like my Facebook feeds full of is people looking for, looking for daycare and everything's full. I, I did see uh. I did see some people, a guy worked for the city, his wife does in home daycare. I seen she's looking to hire. Another provider. So it seems like maybe she's looking to expand her business and, and I think it's definitely certified. She got to pass an F B I fingerprint check. And all kinds of stuff with it. So that's awesome. And, and hopefully they can grow that and, and help pick up some of the slack of that.
Well, I'd also seen on Facebook that somebody had made a comment that the college could have applied for funding to keep their. Keep it open and then they just declined to do it. Do you know anything about that? Or is there grant opportunities or anything?
I don't, I don't know of anything with it. You know, I don't know if there's a, you know. Anything like with a three year old preschool, if that's something they could apply for, you know, through the state with some of that or not. I, I don't have any idea on that.
You know how long the, the center had been open out there, Brian?
I don't know.
That thought had been about twenty years, if not.
I'd say it's more than twenty years.
Yeah, at least that, if not more, so.
Yeah, cause I was there when, when it was established. Yeah, because I was there when, when it was established. I'd say thirty, but I'd have to check that.
Yeah, a long story short, I think we absolutely are in favor of doing something. We want to make sure whatever money we throw at it is money that's gonna be well-spent and gonna make it viable for more than just six months or a year.
Yeah. It seems like it hasn't, it's an issue that has, that creates a lot more problems more quickly than it does solutions.
Yeah. Good question. Anything else for the board? Anything particularly we want to talk about? Anything else there?
We're getting rolling. I wouldn't know. I believe so. It's being set up.
Yeah.
Well, there's nothing else. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make such a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.